Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ed Flynn. I'm the City Council President. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citycouncil-tv. I'd like to ask my colleagues and those in attendance, please silence their phones and electronic devices at this time. Thank you. I would also ask if we're able to be respectful and that we're not able to disrupt the meeting while you are here. If you are disruptive, you will be asked to leave, and if you fail to comply, you will be escorted out. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the room to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Royal.
Present.
Counselor Royal, present. Counselor Baker. Counselor Bach.
Present.
Counselor Bach, present. Counsel Braden.
Present.
Present. Counsel Braden, present. Counsel Edwards.
Present.
Counsel Edwards, present. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson.
Present.
Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, present. Counsel Flaherty.
Here.
Counsel Flaherty, here. Counsel Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Flynn, here. Counsel Lara.
Present.
Counsel Lara, present. Counsel Luzien.
Present.
Counsel Luzien, present. Counsel Amiha.
Here.
Counsel Amiha, present. Counsel Murphy.
Present.
Counsel Murphy, present. And Counsel Worrell.
Present.
Counsel Worrell, present.
Thank you. I have been informed by the clerk, a quorum is present. This week's clergy is -- we're honored to have Father John Curry. He was invited by our Dorchester colleague, City Councilor Frank Baker. Since Counsel Baker is not here today, I will introduce Father Curry on behalf of Counsel Baker's behalf. Also want to thank Counsel Baker's staff for their work on making this possible as well. Father John Curry is currently the pastor of St. Peter's in Holy Family Parishes in Dorchester and St. Patrick Parish in Roxbury. He was born and raised in St. Mark's Parish, and he is the 10th in a family of 12. He attended St. Mark's Elementary School, Boston Latin Academy, Lake Forest College, and St. John Seminary. He was ordained in 1997 and will be 25-year anniversary of the priesthood this coming May. He very much enjoys working with the city and building a bright future for our children in a warm, equitable, supportive community for all people. He's well-respected throughout the city of Boston. Father, we'd like to ask you to come to the podium to open us with a prayer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counsel, for the invitation. Together let us pray. God of all peoples and of all nations, the horror of the invasion of Ukraine, and the loss of life, the trampling of liberties, and the destruction of property that has followed it is a stark reminder of the consequences when just one person abuses power by embracing evil. However, it is also an opportunity to recall that you have woven into the fabric of the human experience divine inclination for every man, woman, and child to embrace the goodness of love and mercy you have ordained for us, which strives to build up a world of peace and justice. Gracious God, when people of goodwill and sincere intentions unite in goodness, evil will never prevail. So with hope rooted in your goodness, we pray for an end to the war in Ukraine and for peace in every corner of our world where your people suffer injustices, no persecution, or any other offense to the dignity of the human person. Father Val, make the work of this council and its members. May it be marked today and every day by a genuine desire to embrace your goodness for the sake of the people of the city of Boston and the city's future. May the councilors unite in civil discourse, mutual respect, and shared mission for the common good and welfare of our great city. May they, the councilors above all, begin each day with a gentle reminder: They were elected to serve and not to be served. And Lord of all, as we anticipate St. Patrick's Day, we ask you to bless the councilors in their work and also to bless this beautiful symbol of the Irish people, these shamrocks, through a prayer so very dear to the Irish May the road rise to meet you. May the wind be always at your backs. May the sun shine warm upon your face. The rains fall soft upon your fields. And until we meet again, may God hold you in the palm of His hands. May God hold you in the palm of His hands. Amen. Have a blessed day, everybody.
Please, if you're able to rise, Father Curry will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have a special guest. I'd like to ask Counsel Murphy to please come to the podium and introduce our special guest. Thank you, Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, President Flynn. Hello, everyone. I'm happy to introduce Saoirse and Roisin. I met them when they were students at the Henderson School, and they are proud BPS students, and they're here as students from the Wood School of Irish Dance, and they will be entertaining us this morning or this afternoon with a rail and a slip jig. So happy
Thank you to that wonderful performance of the Peggy Woods Irish step dancing program. At this time, we do have a special guest from Ireland that is here with us. So I'm honored to welcome to the Boston City Council Ireland Minister Norma Foley of Ireland to the council. Minister Foley was appointed Minister of Education in 2020 and has led the Department of Education during the pandemic with a strong focus on ensuring ongoing dialogue engagement with all education stakeholders. Minister Foley has a passionate interest in excellence in equity in education and the promotion of STEM, ensuring access to the arts for children and young adults. Prior to her election and appointment as Minister, Minister Foley worked as a teacher in her hometown of Trallee, a graduate of the University of Cork. She was also a member of the Kerry City Council and served three terms as mayor of Trallee. Minister Foley is also here with several members of the delegation, including the Council General of Ireland here in Boston. Minister Foley, I would love to welcome you to the Boston City Council and to say a few words, and we have tremendous respect for you, but for the people of Ireland, especially during this time of St. Patrick's Day, when we come together as two countries and recommit ourselves to that important and special relationship.[844.79][844.79][applause]
Well, di hiv gleyair is an orf word ums a vahan sa arno cod un tuch sfa siiltas sa ceilur a loile paodhrig agus buale marr dous mab foyachas ag ola le sochtanama agus an dyesia o churtam cun buile lif agus can laort lif in uff. Could I say at the outset, President Flynn, counselors, Mayor Gormley, Father Curry, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, it is truly a great honor for me and indeed a pleasure to address Boston City Council today to mark St. Patrick's Day. I am so very grateful to the President of the Council, Ed Flynn, for your very kind invitation. And could I at the outset say a very sincere thank you for the very beautiful shamrock and the blessing of the shamrock, and also the very fantastic and energetic dancing by these two young girls that's showing that the Irish culture and heritage is very much growing and being nurtured and thriving here in Boston. So thank you for that, and thank you to the girls very much so. It is true to say that the bonds between Ireland and Boston run very, very deep, indeed over centuries. And I would like to express on behalf of the Irish government our great appreciation of all who have forged those very close ties. I would also like to take this opportunity to congratulate all of you on your recent election to council. I have served on council myself for very many years, and I know it is an incredible honor. So congratulations and well done to you. And we at home in Ireland look forward to building ever closer links with you in this, the capital city of Irish America. I know that this is the first time since 2019 that this noble city has marked St. Patrick's Day in person, and so it is a very particularly special time for me to be here in person with you. There is no doubt that the past two years have reminded us all of the very deep value of community and connection. And this St. Patrick's Day, we in Ireland seek again to reconnect with our communities at home and abroad. We consider ourselves blessed beyond measure to have a thriving and noble Irish community here in Boston. In Ireland, we are marking our national day this year with solidarity rather than celebration, both as we reflect on the toll of the recent pandemic and also, of course, in light of the horrific and heartbreaking war in Ukraine these past number of weeks. On the eve of St. Patrick's Day, I am ever mindful, and I must record this here officially here in this chamber, of the very great generosity of the city of Boston in terms of the protection it has given to Irish people who fled our country in desperate circumstances in the 19th century. Those who traveled on coffin ships to escape famine. Those who left in search of new opportunities and new beginnings. Those who left, many to return. Boston City has also stood with us in solidarity as we sought to chart our destiny as an independent nation. We are very grateful for that support and solidarity, and we do not forget it. So it is right at this moment in time that we show support and solidarity for others in their hour of need. And so this year, as Ireland marks the centenary of the establishment of our state, we stand firmly in support and solidarity of the people of Ukraine.[1104.01][1104.01][applause] We are using our voice in the European Union and our seat at the UN Security Council to seek an end to the conflict and to hold Russia accountable. Today in particular, as we all gather here, I would invite you to remember in a special way an Irish journalist, Pierre Zakrebski, who was tragically killed in the Ukraine as he bravely reported on the conflict. A past pupil of St. Conlitt's College in Dublin, Pierre was a global citizen, working for RTE, the BBC, and was regularly reporting from conflict regions for Fox News. Our thoughts and prayers are with Mr. Zakrebski's family at home in Ireland and his colleagues around the globe. We also remember with acute sadness all the other families who have been impacted by the harrowing and unjust conflict in the Ukraine. As a government, Ireland has increased our humanitarian aid and other supports to Ukraine. And like our fellow EU member states, we have opened doors to those fleeing from conflict in desperate circumstances. And we do this because we remember, and we remember well, that others opened their doors, their hearts, and their homes to us. As a nation, we have benefited hugely from the goodwill and political solidarity of so many in Boston, Massachusetts, and wider New England. You have played, and you continue to play, a central and constructive role in securing peace and prosperity on the island of Ireland, especially so as we seek to ensure that the gains of the Good Friday Agreement are protected from the challenges of Brexit. We are deeply grateful for that friendship and support, as well as the close people-to-people trade and tourism links between Boston and Ireland. It is more than true to say that we have been enriched beyond measure by the friendships extended to us by the people of the United States of America. We treasure that friendship and are ever mindful of the wisdom of William Shakespeare himself, who tells us, "The friends thou hast and their adoption tried, grapple them to thy soul with hoops of steel." And so we hold fast, deep in our souls, to the ties of friendship and solidarity that bind the great city of Boston and the Emerald Isle. And on this occasion here today, as we mark St. Patrick's Day, with heartfelt sincerity, I say to you, thank you for your friendship, support, and solidarity. Long may it continue to grow and to prosper. And as I conclude, may I confer upon you the blessing of our patron Saint, Saint Patrick. I have a very small presentation that I would like to make to your president in appreciation of your hospitality here today, but equally so in appreciation of the longstanding ties that exist between the fair Emerald Isle and Boston.
Thank you.[1331.12][1331.12][applause] We, on behalf of the Boston City Council, I would like to ask Counsel Braden if she'd like to come to the podium. We would like to present the Council General and the Minister with some shamrocks here as a token of our friendship between our two countries. So I'd like to ask Counsel Braden if she will present these on behalf of the City Council. And I'd like to ask my colleagues to come up for a photo, and I'd also like to recognize our friend from West Roxbury, Mayor Ritchie Gormley, who's also here. He does a tremendous amount of work supporting so many charities. Ritchie Gormley, Mayor Gormley. Thank you, Counsel Flynn. I'd like to present this book to the Council General of Ireland. And we also have the mayor of Boston is with us here as well, and we're just honored time, it's an honor to have the mayor of Boston with us, Mayor Wu. to have Michelle Wu as our mayor to be with us today on this special eve of St. Patrick's
Thank you, Mr. President. I caught a bit of the remarks from the hallway, and so
Day. Mayor Wu, I'd love to invite you to the podium and offer official greetings from
just wanted to come by and add my thanks to Minister Foley and Council General Moore
the residents of Boston.
for all your leadership here. We know that Boston has always enjoyed a very special
Picture first.
Okay. We're going to do a picture first, and then the mayor will speak.
relationship and connection to Ireland, and I've had many fond memories in this chamber
It's like a wedding.
also celebrating that connection and I think holding up the culture and heritage of our Boston Irish as a reminder of how important the immigration story and immigrant story
Thank you.
is to every part of our community here. So we thank you for your visit here. We thank you for your example. There have been many a time also where in passing policy we have invoked that, for example, Ireland is way ahead of us in implementing plastic bag bans and really focusing on climate. So you are green in many ways, and we hope to join you in that front too. So thank you for having me.[1488.83][1488.83][applause]
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Wu, and thank you to the delegation from Ireland that's here with us today. Thank you to the mayor of West Roxbury, Ritchie Gormley, and to the Wood School of Irish Step Dancing. And we're just honored to have Minister Foley that was with us. And my sister Maureen is married to a man named Foley, and they're also from the same part of Ireland in Kerry. So I won't hold that against her though, okay? So we're going to get on to the meeting. Now on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing those discussion on the matter, the chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. All those in favor approving the minutes from the last meeting say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. The meeting of the last meeting stand as approved. Communications from her on to the mayor. Mr. Clerk, please read Doc. 0375.
Document number 0375, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $555,166.40 in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 20 assistance to firefighters grant awarded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund safety training and fitness equipment to support officer health and wellness.
Thank you. Doc. 0375 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, please read Doc. 0376.
Document number 0376, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $492,286 in the form of a grant, Accelerating Clean Transportation for All, awarded by the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center, to be administered by the Transportation Department. The grant will fund the launch of an e-cargo bike delivery pilot, which will include supporting local businesses to join the program.
Thank you. Doc. 0376 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, please read Doc. 0377.
Document number 0377, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $38,829.16 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 22 firefighter safety equipment awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund the purchase of rescue, safety, and exercise equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety Criminal Justice. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Chair of the Committee on Public Safety Criminal Justice, asking to rise for to suspend the rules in pass Doc. 0377. This grant, a small amount of $38,000, will fund the purchase and rescue safety and exercise equipment for our firefighters. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty moves for suspension of the rules, passage of Doc. 0377. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0376.
Document number 0376, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $492,286 in the form of a grant, Accelerating Clean Transportation for All, awarded by the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center, to be administered by the Transportation Department. The grant will fund the launch of an e-cargo bike delivery pilot, which will include supporting local businesses to join the program.
Thank you. Docket 0376 will be referred to the Committee on Planning Development Transportation. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0377.
Document number 0377, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $38,829.16 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 22 firefighter safety equipment awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services to be administered by the fire department. The grant will fund the purchase of rescue, safety, and exercise equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair recognizes Council Flaherty, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety Criminal Justice. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Chair of the Committee on Public Safety Criminal Justice, asking to rise for, to suspend the rules in pass docket 0377. This grant, a small amount of $38,000, will fund the purchase and rescue safety and exercise equipment for our firefighters. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty moves for suspension of the rules, passage of docket 0377. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0378?
Document number 0378, message in order to accept for the benefit of the city of Boston Police Department, a donation of bicycle helmets from the Boston Police Foundation, valued at $14,732, for the purpose of providing protective gear to the Boston Police Department.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Flaherty, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety Criminal Justice. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Mr. President, as chair, I rise to ask that the rules be suspended to pass docket 0378. It is a message in order for $14,732 to provide helmets and much-needed protective gear for our police officers, particularly for the bicycle unit. And I know, we all know, as district and at-large councils, how popular that division is in all of our neighborhoods. So if we can get these resources and these helmets out to these offices as the weather is changing, so we can see these cyclists out in our neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty moves suspension of the rules, passage of docket 0378. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 03790380 together.
Document number 0379, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter Six of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of February 16, 2022. And document number 0380, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter Six of the ordinances of 1979 relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of March 2, 2022.
Thank you. Docket 03790380 will be placed on file. Reports of committee. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0264.
Document number 0264, the Committee on Civil Rights and Immigrant Advancement, to which was referred on February 9, 2022. Document number 0264, order that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council hold a working session to review applications for the commission on black men and boys. submits a report recommending that the order pass and the names of the 14 individuals listed in the report be submitted to Mayor Wu.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Lou Jean, Chair of the Committee on Civil Rights and Immigration. Council Lou Jean, the Chair of Committee, Council Lou Jean, you have recognized.
Mr. President, we’re here to discuss docket 0264, the order to review applications for the commission on black men and boys, sponsored by Councilors Julia Mejia and yourself, Council President Ed Flynn. It was referred to the committee on February 9, 2022. Mayor Wu is accepting 14 recommendations from the Boston City Council, of which seven will be approved and appointed to serve on the commission. An ordinance creating the commission on black men and boys was initially codified last September. This year, the current ordinance was amended by adding divisions relating to executive director and defining the role of the executive director. The executive director would be a member of the commission, ex officio, without additional compensation, and would have a vote on matters before the commission. In order to collaborate with the city council, the mayor requested recommendations from us and will appoint seven members to the commission from our 14 recommendations. We established an online application process where members of the public were encouraged to apply to be one of the 14 nominees submitted to the council, and members of the commission will serve staggered two, three, and four-year terms. Councilors nominated two or three individuals when we held a hearing, a working session for consideration by the mayor. Councilors, we discussed the community involvement and experience of the nominees. We also recognize the work of former District Seven City Councilor Tito Jackson in getting this commission really off the ground, even when he was initially told no, he persisted. And councilors expressed also support for our fellow city council colleague, Brian Worrell, to serve as a commission member. We emphasized the importance of participation, and we also recognized that we wanted to ensure that members of the public had one of the 21 seats on the commission. And so, it is our understanding that Brian Worrell, who had overwhelming support from during the city council process, he’ll be included in the administration selection process, which may also include just being a member of the steering committee and being involved in other ways, so as to ensure that members of the public will be able to have one of the seats and can be civically engaged in that way. So the passage of this order will approve the names of the following 14 individuals for submission to Mayor Wu. First, Tito Jackson, Darrell Miller, James Hill, Dave Bazil, James Mackey, Jeff Similian, Justin Brown, Alex Edwards, Devin Morris, Kurt Faustin, Kwame Edwards, Louis Alisa, Osa Ohiyomoba, and Stephen Hanton. From these recommendations, Mayor Wu will appoint seven members to serve on the commission. I submit this report recommending that this order ought to pass. Thank you, President Flynn.
Thank you, Council Lou Jean. Council Lou Jean, the Chair of the Committee on Civil Rights Immigration Advancement seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket 0264. Before we do that, I’d like to recognize Council Worrell. Council Worrell, would you like to speak? Okay, I apologize. I didn’t see the, I didn’t see. I do apologize. The light was not on, so I apologize.
It was, and then I turned it off because you went straight to the other side, so I figured I’d let you live a little bit. But I do appreciate you looking out for me, so thank you. So just wanted to say thank you to President Flynn, and congratulations to Council Lou Jean for cheering your first hearing and holding it down like she always does. I’m incredibly proud to be here today to vote in favor of the 14 black men that we have nominated to serve on the commission for black men and boys. Our nominees come from all different backgrounds, sexual orientation, ages, lived experiences, and bring so much resources and life to this conversation. And while the mayor is slated to select seven of our 14 nominees, I think we can all agree that all 14 deserve to sit on the commission. During the working session, we also came to the conclusion that our very own Councilor Worrell is incredibly qualified to serve on the commission, and we hope that the mayor will make room for him so that the voice of black men from the council can be heard as well. I look forward to working with the commission, the commissioners, once they’re sworn in, so that we can continue to uplift the voices and the lived experiences in all spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Mejia. At this time, the chair recognizes Council Brian Worrell. Council Worrell, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, President Flynn, and thank you, Council Lou Jean and Council Mejia, for all your work and your leadership in establishing the Black Men’s and Boys Commission. I just want to thank to all my colleagues for nominating me. I’m very honored and truly grateful to have the opportunity to serve on this historic commission here in the city of Boston that will advance black men and boys here in the city of Boston, and to assure that, you know, our community are given the supports and tools that they need to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Worrell. Would anyone else like to speak on this? Thank you, Council Lou Jean, Council Mejia. Thank you, Council Worrell, and I’m so glad that Council Worrell will play a key role on this commission. He has an incredible, important voice in this city, so thank you, Council Worrell, for the important work you do. Council Lou Jean, Chair of the Committee on Civil Rights Immigration Advancement, seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of docket 0264. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0264 has passed. Matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0185, please.
Document number 0185, petition for a special law relative to enact granting the city of Boston the authority to provide legal voting rights in municipal elections for the city of Boston residents aged 16 and 17 years old.
The chair recognizes Council Royal, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Council Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Tuesday, March 14, the committee held a hearing on docket 0185. This matter was introduced by Councilors Mejia and Councilor Bach. I want to thank the lead sponsors for introducing this matter, and for my council colleagues that were able to join us, Council Braden, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Lara, Council Lou Jean, Council Flynn, Council Worrell, and Council Flaherty. I also want to thank the Elections Department and our panel of advocates for their time and participation. This home rule petition would authorize the city of Boston to allow any individual aged 16 or 17 who is a resident of Boston to be able to vote, as long as they are eligible under state law for all other qualifications other than age. These individuals would be added to a separate list of voters to be established and maintained by the Board of Election Commissioners, and will be allowed to vote for local office and ballot questions. This would be done by having them fill out an alternative registration form. The Board of Elections would be responsible for associated costs. The petition would also grant the Board the authority to implement regulations associated with this act. When the individual turns 18, they would be removed from the separate list and informed that they must register to vote in accordance with state law. During the hearing, we heard testimony from the Elections Department on the logistical details that would be needed to address and implement this petition, including restrictions around how information of 16-year-olds would need to be safeguarded. The Elections Department also shared that since implementation of pre-registration for 16- and 17-year-olds in 2020, the department has processed a total of 3,720 applications, showing that there is a high interest in electoral participation among those who have not yet turned 18. Both the administration and the advocates were able to speak to practices from other cities, states, and countries that have implemented similar electoral policies, as well as the impact this legislation would have on expanding the electorate in Boston. This conversation serves as a good starting point for this home rule petition, and I look forward to more detailed conversations about the language in future working sessions. As Chair, I recommend that this matter ought to remain in committee. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Royal. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
I just wanted to thank the chair for hosting the hearing, and also just want to uplift Nasaaj Rair, who is one of the young people that participated in the hearing. She took some time from school to participate with us, which goes to show how important it is to ensure that we recognize that the reason why we’re pushing for this is that young people want to be engaged. They are mature and understand what is at stake for them. They’re the ones, they’re working, paying taxes, oftentimes working two to three jobs just to help support their families. So we need to do right by them and making sure that we support this effort. And I really want to thank my colleagues who participated and for their support around this initiative as well. So thank you so very much.
Thank you, Council Mejia. The chair recognizes Council Block. Council Block, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I also want to thank the chair and Council Mejia and all our panelists who came, and the councilors. I think that, you know, this is a docket where I think we’ve already heard a majority of councilors in support. We heard support from the Elections Commission. We had really good tangible feedback from the Elections Commission about what they would need to implement it most effectively, so I’m looking forward to the working session under the offices of the chair. But I just want to emphasize, you know, we had a colleague from Scotland come and join the meeting virtually. In Scotland, 16- and 17-year-olds have been voting for almost a decade in their local elections, and it’s been a huge driver of youth participation. It has not upended the world, but it has allowed a lot of people to really get involved in democratic civic activism. And as was raised on the call, when we involve our young people, it also means involving a lot of our marginalized communities. It often drives things in a direction of economic justice. I mean, there’s a lot of reasons why we want to make voices, and immigrant families sometimes is the only vote that you might have access to for now. And so, just really want to stress that we’re looking forward to partnering with the chair and making this something that the council is able to support in the near term. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Block. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Docket 0185 will remain in committee. Docket 0291 has been withdrawn from the agenda at this time. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0312, please.
Document number 0312, message in order for your approval and ordinance regarding targeted residential picketing to protect the quality of residential life in our city, filed in the office of the city clerk on February 28, 2022.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Royal, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Council Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Monday, March 13, the committee held a hearing on docket 0312, an ordinance regarding residential picketing to protect the quality of residential life in our city. This matter was introduced by the mayor on March 2, 2022, and according to council rules, must be acted upon by this body before May 2, 2022. I want to thank my council colleagues that were able to join us, Council Murphy, Council Lou Jean, Council Bach, Council Braden, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Mejia, Council Flynn, and Council Lara. I also want to thank Chief Malore for joining us from the administration. This ordinance would limit the ability of individuals to engage in targeted picketing between 9:00 PM and 9:00 AM. For this ordinance, targeted picketing means picketing, protesting, or demonstrating directed towards a specific residence. This ordinance would work in addition to existing laws around excessive noise disturbing the peace and blocking streets and sidewalks. Violation of the ordinance would result in a fine of $100 for the first offense, $200 for the second offense, and $300 for the third and any subsequent offense. The ordinance would be enforced by the Boston Police Department. During the hearing, the committee discussed, there we go.
Excuse me. This is a warning. Next time, you’re going to be escorted out of the building.
This shouldn’t even be heard. This is not a constitution.
Can we take a brief recess?
Not to be interrupted.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Council Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you. During the hearing, the committee discussed the legality of the ordinance and whether it would unreasonably restrict First Amendment rights. There was some discussion of including a sunset clause or more clearly defining which protests, demonstrations, and picketing would be covered by this ordinance. Several councilors highlighted the fact that this ordinance was not introduced in a void, but rather in the context of hateful extended attacks in the mayor’s residential neighborhood. While the Law Department did send a letter discussing some high-level legal aspects of the ordinance, they declined to attend the hearing, and the committee was not able to get further clarification on how the ordinance could be more narrowly tailored. Several councilors also inquired about the lack of enforcement of the city’s existing noise ordinance and expressed concern over the addition of this ordinance instead of enforcement upon an existing law. The committee will be submitting requests for information to the administration, including an explanation from the police department about why existing noise ordinance has not been enforced, the total amount spent on police details for the demonstrations at the mayor’s residence, the number of attorneys within the Law Department, their responsibilities, and their salaries, as well as the amount of money spent on contracting.
Excuse me. That’s your warning, sir. Please do not disrupt, please do not disrupt this hearing. You have your right to your opinion, not to disrupt. Please escort him out, please. Let’s take a quick, quick. We’re back in session.
Thank you, Mr. President. The number of attorneys within the Law Department, their responsibilities, and their salaries, as well as the amount of money spent on contracting outside legal counsel, whether a stay-away order would be a more effective punitive measure rather than fines. This hearing has also included a large amount of public testimony, and as Chair, I would just like to correct some misinformation that may have been spread because of this hearing. The COVID-19 virus is real. It’s not a hoax. Vaccines are approved, safe and an important way to prevent serious illness. And in addition, City Hall has been open to the public since last summer. I also want to thank our central staff, U-Lady, Candace, and Christine, whose patience leading up to and throughout the hearing allowed it to go as smoothly as I believe it possibly could. Due to outstanding questions of councilors, I recommend that this matter ought to remain in committee for a working session so that we can hear from the police department and the Law Department on specific language adjustments that were discussed at the hearing. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Council Royal. Would any other councilors like to speak on this? Docket 0312 will remain in committee. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0381.
Document number 0381, Council Edwards offered the following order for a hearing to discuss the regulation and citing of cannabis establishments in the city of Boston and the zoning board of appeals.
The chair recognizes Council Edwards. Council Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, President Flynn. Just real quick, I also want to thank you for your leadership in this moment, and to my colleagues, I think we owe our president a round of applause, honestly. I think people forget, part of the job of the president is not only to keep the meeting moving, but to protect the body and to make sure democracy is happening. So thank you so much. Thank you, Council Royal, as well. So we’re, I want to give a quick history lesson, because there’s a lot of institutional knowledge about cannabis that needs to be brought into this moment, and hopefully will be discussed as we discuss how it is going on in the city. As many of you know, in 2016, the city of Boston voted overwhelmingly to decriminalize and outright legalize cannabis, a part of the statewide initiative. The statewide initiative also required the creation of a state agency called the CCC, the Cannabis Control Commission, and they have a specific mandate, a moral mandate, to undo the harm of the war on drugs. That allows for our cities and towns also to opt in or opt out of having legalized marijuana and the sale of it, or cannabis. and the sale of it, or cannabis, I should say, in their districts. But it also puts on them an obligation to also deal with the war on drugs and the harms caused by it. Moreover, when we're talking about from the statewide mandates, you are required, every city and town, to have at least 20% of the liquor licenses. You must have 20% of those in terms of cannabis establishments and licenses. So we have a quota to meet. We have a moral obligation to meet. We have also an industry to grow and to regulate in the city of Boston, that the city of Boston overwhelmingly chose to be regulated and to grow here. Now, with all of that being said, there was a delay. Some people felt the prior administration had taken too long in even trying to establish a system to give out licenses, to give out host community agreements, which is basically the way in which we could contract with a dispensary to allow them to open. And they felt that there was, due to the Baker administration and the Walsh administration seemed to oppose the legalization, there seemed to be the unclear understanding. But eventually, we opened up the Office of Emerging Industries. I was there when that office opened, and I was there when that office seemed to, unfortunately in an opaque way, pick which entities were able to have a HCA and which ones weren't. We also, and I want to give credit to my colleague, Council Flaherty, 1.0 or 2.0? 2.0. 2.0, yeah. 2.0. He took it upon himself, which I do appreciate, to say, not only are we going to have this industry thrive, we're not going to let it be concentrated in any one community. If we have, and the number is 52 establishments to have in the city of Boston, it will be spread everywhere. No one gets to say, not in my backyard, because everyone voted for it. So as a result, we didn't want a Green Mile as well. It's just that neighborhood to go to to go get high or go get your stuff. As a result, a half-mile buffer zone was put into this regulation to separate them and to encourage diversity, geographic diversity. That is why it's put in. There is no other industry, no other vice, in the city of Boston that has a buffer zone like that. We also require to cite from distances from schools, as well, I think, 300 feet. That is part of other laws when it comes to liquor establishments and so on and so forth. Now, I do want to note that your Office of Emerging Industry was called by this body, which is our number-one role, which is to hold accountable and to demand answers. Council Janey, at the time, held a hearing specifically to ask, what is going on and why aren't people getting their licenses? What are the point system you're even using? And why is it that this person got it and this person didn't? In East Boston, we had a horrible problem where two were within the half-mile buffer, and one got the HCA, both got the HCA, and then had to go to the ZBA. And that's where the problem exists today. After all the back and forth and getting their HCAs, going to the ZBA. The ZBA then chose the corporate cannabis shop and gave them the opportunity to open up. They just happened to be in front of the Iraq veteran, the Latino, the local person who I represent. They were physically in front of him in line. That's it. He came up and said, well, I would like to also open up one. And they said, sorry, you're within a half-mile buffer. They enforced it against him. They could have easily switched the order and favored the local veteran. They chose not to, and they had no guidance to do so. So since then, I have been disgusted with the ZBA and their role in any way, shape, or form in the conversation when it comes to cannabis. And I use that word disgusted because that's exactly how I feel, and that's what they've earned. Now, Council Janey's leadership was immense in creating the BCB, the Boston Cannabis Board, where for the first time, folks like ourselves, regular people in Boston, will be giving out licenses. These licenses are connected to the HCA. So now we have a cannabis board. This did not exist when the half-mile buffer was introduced. This did not exist when we legalized it. It existed three years later. And that board has grown immensely and has made the entire process very transparent. They have hearings. They require, for the first time, a district-city counselor to be notified, to write the letter of opposition, of support. All of these things happen in the public eye. They require a community meeting, all of these things, before the person can even come in front of them. And they have to have security. They have to show that if they're an equity applicant. And that was one of the best things, one of the lasting legacies of Council Janey, former Mayor Janey, is the equity, the one-for-one requirement, so that corporations can't come in and just take up all the good spots and take up all the cannabis areas. We have a one-for-one, but that only exists with the BCB. Equity applicants only exist with the BCB. The analysis of location only exists with the BCB, and we did that. We added that in there. We added in labor members. We added in people who were part of the neighborhood for the first time. We added in veterans as a protected class. We added indigenous people. We, this body. And the thing is, we, this body, can only add and amend the BCB, those standards, those individuals who sit there. That's where our power lies, and we are able to adjust with the BCB as this industry will adjust, because we're going to have onsite consumption at some point. We're going to have restaurants at some point, and we need to be able to regulate them. And that's why I'm further disgusted by the ZBA, because we cannot regulate them. I have a home rule petition right now that's been waiting two years to even add an urban planner to the ZBA. You see, they are now able to say no to an industry that's moving like this, to a board that's moving like this, that's moving faster than them with different standards in them, with equity obligations that they do not have, are not trained in, don't know what they're talking about, asking about race, asking about equity applicants, to only cannabis establishments. They don't ask about the color or the racial demographics of the developers who come before them, trust and believe it's nowhere near as diverse. They don't ask about it. They're not trained in it. Yet they play around. And what happens is they end up being the last step for a bunch of people, in some cases, NIMBYs who just don't want cannabis in their neighborhood. So they pile on, pile in, and just get the ZBA to say no to them. There's no standard, by the way, for their half-mile when they choose to enforce it or not. It shows. Today, there are six people, six entities, that have been given a license by the BCB. Half of them are equity applicants, people of color, and they were told no by the ZBA. They're stuck in this horrible situation. When we had the hearing about the original, and I introduced a zoning amendment to remove the ZBA, when they came forward, one of the applicants, owner of Pre-Areas, said, if I didn't have to go to the ZBA, I would have saved $40,000. I wasted time and money. That's what we're doing to an emerging industry that's supposed to actually be repairing the harm on Black and Brown individuals who were harmed by the war on drugs. We continue that harm by bureaucratic mess that we allow to continue to happen. So last year, I introduced this zoning amendment. It did go to the Zoning Commission. During that conversation, Council Bach and I, which we disagreed on the broadness of my amendment, we disagreed, but we believe we came to, I think, a narrowly tailored compromise. I hope that Council Bach will come to the hearing on this to talk about that narrowly tailored compromise. As a district-city counselor, I am sympathetic with her situation in that she represents predominantly the downtown neighborhoods, where there might be an oversaturation of a lot of industries, including cannabis. So I know that's a lot, but like half the council wasn't here when all this happened. So I wanted you to know why this is so important. We have this conversation. We are talking about real money and the tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions of dollars. We are talking about an obligation, a moral one, to make sure that money flows equally, equitably, into hands of people who are formerly incarcerated, into people who are veterans, who are indigenous, who are Black, who have grown up in communities that have been overpoliced. All of that is in our hands. And by the way, if we separate the ZBA, it's solely in this body's hands. That's the kind of control and the movement and also the empowerment that we need to have. The ZBA has nobody on there that deals with public safety. They do not have somebody on there that's dealing with economic equity. We put them on the BCB. They don't deal with public health. They're not dealing with addiction specialists. All of them are on the licensing board right now. We have the expertise. We have the people in the movement. I'm just asking that you separate the two. And by the way, I'm sure by now you've already heard enough complaints about the ZBA and the administration of the laws they already have. Why are we letting them do this? So apologize for the length of time. I just felt it was very necessary that you understood my passion in this. My neighborhood was the one that got screwed over the most in this back and forth and half-mile and so on and so forth. We now have four cannabis establishment in East Boston, half of whom are equity applicants. I'm proud of that. So I'm not against the industry. I'm also not looking to promote it. I just want us to be the best government we can when we're dealing with these deep injuries. The best way we can do that is remove the ZBA. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Edwards. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the previous speaker as the original sponsor of the half-mile buffer and as the former Chair of Government Operations who worked closely on the ordinance that created the Boston Cannabis Board. I'm happy to have this discussion. Please add my name, and it was obviously a great recap of things that have happened to date. So as referenced, the spirit and the intent of the buffer zone was to ensure cannabis facilities were cited equitably throughout the city. Unfortunately, our ZBA has approved a few buffer zone conflicts, and they've denied others, exposing the city to potential legal action and causing additional lack of predictability and fairness for residents, first and foremost, as well as for the business owners who are out there, trying to make commitments, signing leases, securing investors, trying to navigate the lengthy permitting process to cite a fully legal business. With that said, I think it's also important to note that we, as a city, we're familiar with the Zoning Board of Appeals process. Our residents, our civic groups, understand how to engage in that process that takes place every week in this building, upstairs on Tuesdays. The state law that legalized marijuana also allows for municipalities to control the time, place, and manner of cannabis establishments, and that does not need to be done through local zoning. So we do have a cannabis board, and we could empower them to make these decisions. At the end of the day, for me, it's about predictability of process. It's about fairness, and it's about upholding the half-mile buffer zone that's in the zoning code. And it can't be about who you know and who you hire and this meeting and that meeting. We have a half-mile buffer zone that was supported by this body, that was supported overwhelmingly by residents across the city who asked us to do that. And so I'm looking forward to a public discussion about this. Let's get the civic associations and the community groups, let them get them in. I know that when we talked about this the last time, there was concern because that's the process they know. They know the Zoning Board of Appeals process. They know that they deal with Officer Neighborhood Services. They work with district and at-large counselors and our staffs. Maybe it was sort of a new sort of process for them, but we need to bring them in so that they understand that the cannabis board that we have up and running, they can be empowered to make these decisions, that these aren't local zoning decisions. But at the end of the day, again, predictability of process, fairness, and upholding the half-mile buffer is key to this entire equation. Thank you, Ms. President. Look forward to the hearing.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Council Block. Council Block, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you to Council Edwards for both reintroducing the conversation and for that summary to everyone. I think that we, you know, one of the things that Council Edwards mentioned in passing, but I just want to underscore, is that I think this council passed last year in ordinance a number of changes to the BCB in order to address, as Council Flaherty was saying, the question of whether the BCB itself was considering location in the buffer zone, because part of what was happening was that there was a sense that the buffer zone question was sort of being punted to the ZBA, and that therefore, if we took the ZBA out of the process, we'd be taking out that factor altogether. And so Council Edwards, with her leadership, we passed something that put more expertise in zoning and more focus on location into the BCB side of the equation and also raised the standard for a buffer zone exemption that the BCB was weighing. And I want to give credit to the cannabis board. I think we've seen them reflect those changes, like we've seen them, because that was another question, is will they do it? But we've seen them kind of process those. I think that the remaining thing that we have to navigate, and it's going to be the topic of further conversation, is just that aside from the concern downtown about concentration, we have both in my district and I know in a number of colleagues' districts, these like neighborhood business sub-districts where a lot of uses are all on top of each other. And one of the ways historically that we figured out how to deal with the fact that like five different people are getting deliveries for their businesses all to one corner is that we basically use the ZBA process as a way to be like, where are you storing your trash and what are you doing with deliveries and stuff? And so one of the concerns that arose in my district was, okay, but that level of granular detail isn't really what the BCB is talking about. But if someone's going to open a stationary store in this sub-district, they're going to need to talk about this with their neighbors, and we don't want it to be that a marijuana store doesn't have to talk about those things with their neighbors. So that's sort of the kind of operational challenge that we're dealing with in the sub-districts. But I think, as Council Edwards said, that we sort of moved towards a narrowly tailored solution to that problem and looking forward to discussing it further. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Block. And we're adding your name, Council Block?
Yes.
The Chair recognizes Council Lara. Council Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you to Councilor Edwards for offering this hearing order. I just wanted to speak in support of reviewing the process of how we approve cannabis stores in our neighborhoods, but also wanted to caution us to maybe use a wider lens when we're looking at it. I know of at least two instances when the Boston Cannabis Board has approved two locations within the same half-mile, and then the ZBA has had to make the decision on which one they were going to approve in the neighborhood. One of those instances is outside of my district. One instance is Curry is currently, excuse me, currently live in Jamaica Plain, where the Cannabis Board approved one corporation, one equity applicant, and now the ZBA is left to make the decision about who goes there. In the other instance, it was in a different neighborhood, the ZBA made the choice to obviously leave in the equity participant. And so I say that to say that I would like us to really look at the entire process, find the inflection points on where we can make changes to make sure that it's streamlined. And also, I am supportive, I'm not supportive of the ZBA in any way, shape, or form, but also thinking about how we remove bureaucracy without zoning in on only one issue, when we've also seen similar decisions come out of the Boston Cannabis Board. So I really look forward to having this discussion. I just want to ask to my colleagues to widen the conversation, to look at the entire process and how it could be more equitable versus just looking into the ZBA.
Thank you, Council Lara. Council Lara, we're adding your name.
Yes.
Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else, would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Please add Council Royal, Council Bar, Council Braden, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Lara, Council Loujen, Council Mahia, Council Murphy, Council Rowland. Please add the Chair. Docket 0381 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, Transportation. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0382.
Document number 0382, Council Braden offered the following order for a hearing on the importance of census and demographic data and the consequences of an undercount.
The Chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a hearing order on the importance of the census and demographic data and the consequences of an undercount. As policymakers in municipal government, we like to say that we make data-driven decisions, but we all know that the 2020 census was significantly underfunded, highly politicized by our former president, and was conducted in the midst of a pandemic. And as a result of seriously undercounting Black and Brown communities across the country, and certainly here in Boston, in addition to the 40% decline in Austin-Brighton's group shortage population. So in January of 26, the council already voted to adopt docket numbers 0203 in order for the city to submit a count-question resolution operation, the formal and legitimate process for government units to challenge our census results. So however, I file this hearing order to discuss the importance of census and demographic data beyond just the decennial census years and explore how we can better integrate demographic data as metrics and indicators across all aspects of city work and programs. All of this data is essential to guiding our decision-making and planning for the future. The important work of population estimates, projections, and demographic interpretations happens every year and every day. As we know, the Elections Department conducts our annual residential listing, which some decision-making is based on. However, there are additional annual programs of the census -- However, there are additional annual programs of the Census Bureau which would significantly impact Boston over the next decade if we do not correct the inaccuracies of the 2020 census. The Census Bureau conducts an annual population estimates program, collected using population base, which will be determined by the results of the 2020 census, and takes into account population change, including deaths, births, and migration. The city of Boston has a record of successfully disputing estimates in the count in 2005, 2006, 2007, 2008, 2014, with the city's official population estimates being revised with increases between 5,000 to over 35,000 residents at a time. Any change, I just want to state that any changes or correction of the numbers will not influence our discussions regarding redistricting or represyncing within the city. There is also the Census Bureau's housing unit estimates, which also uses the 2020 census population base and factors the Boston's reported building permits and new residential construction. So really, in essence, I anticipate that this hearing would be an opportunity for us to discuss the ramifications of the 2020 census undercount and how it impacts all of our city departments, revise updates for our city's challenge to the count, and hear from our city department's current practices and from demographers and policy experts on how to use the demographic data to inform our policymaking and city programs in general. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Braden. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else? Okay. The chair recognizes Council Loujain. Council Loujain, you have the floor.
President Flynn, I just rise to say, to add my name and to say that I support this hearing order. We know that with undercounts, this really affects immigrant populations oftentimes who are afraid to answer census questions, especially under this past administration. We know that it affects transient folks, those who are underhoused, Black and Brown folks, and that this undercounting is directly tied to federal funding, right? Seeing and realizing a decrease in funding at that level. And so I 100% support this hearing order so that we can get our numbers right, so that we can get the funding that we deserve for our neighborhoods and for our Black and Brown and immigrant communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Loujain. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? I also wanted to state that during the census count, there was a lot of tremendous work from various neighborhood and civic groups, including the Chinese Progressive Association, the Castle Square Tenants Association, the NAACP in Boston. And during this count, this census count, it happened during the pandemic, and a lot of my constituents weren't answering their door, their phone, especially in the AAPI community here in Boston. So I just want to say thank you to Council Braden for the important work that you're doing on this issue. Would anyone else like to, would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Please add Council Arroyo, Council Bock, Council Edwards, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Lara, Council Loujain, Council Mejia, Council Murphy, Council Rell. Please add the chair. Docet 0381 will be referred to the Committee, I'm sorry. Yeah, Docet 0382 will be referred to the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0383.
Docet number 0383, Councilors Mejia and Arroyo offer the following: Resolution supporting the P.A. Shaw Elementary School community.
The chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Council Arroyo for co-sponsoring this resolution with us. This morning, we kicked off our day in support of the Shaw, and I want to thank my colleagues, Council Loujain and Council Murphy for showing up, and Council Arroyo for supporting the families there. I think it's really important for us to recognize that, you know, there's a lot happening in our education system right now, and there's a lot of concerns around whether or not families are really being heard and students and educators being paid attention to. So when our office was reached out to by some of the folks in the Shaw, we took it upon ourselves to lean into the conversation and to create space and to not just listen, but to roll up our sleeves and organize alongside them. So we utilized our social media platform and our voice to uplift theirs, right? But it was really the young people, the little ones, who took to the streets, who went to the school committee meetings and told their stories. They're the reasons why they were able to secure their fourth grade. But the work still continues. There's still a lot more that we need to do here in the city of Boston to ensure that we are definitely keeping the promises that we have made to so many. So I would just like to say that we are filing this resolution because it's really important for the administration to recognize that while we appreciate the two fourth grades, that there's still a lot more to do. And there's a saying that if it's not broke, don't fix it. Well, not only is the Shaw not broken, it is working tremendously, and we need to be doing everything in our power to learn from model schools like the Shaw and implement what they're doing in other schools across the district. And as we approach this budget season, we need to ask ourselves as counselors, what are we doing to fund schools that nurture educational excellence like the Shaw does? And I hope that as a council, we can send a message through this resolution that we are invested in the academic future of our students and to expand models that work best for our students and our community. I move that we suspend and pass the rules and pass this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mejia. The chair recognizes Council Arroyo. Council Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you, Council Julia Mejia, for your advocacy on behalf of the Shaw School, and thank you to Council Loujain and Council Murphy for being present this morning. It's great that their advocacy was heard when it comes to the addition of a fourth grade. We are still going to be working towards a fifth and sixth grade so that it is in alignment with our school communities, so that the Shaw and their families can continue to grow and learn in a community that they are comfortable with, that they want to be in, that they want to continue to grow in. And so we will continue the advocacy to do that. I'm grateful that BPS responded to their advocacy by providing that fourth-grade class, and now we have to continue to move to bring it into alignment with our first-through-sixth grade model that we have for the district. And so thank you to the Shaw and the parents who have been on this from day one for months. I'm grateful to the organizing teachers there and to the students, most of all, for ensuring that they got the resources that they deserved. And I hope that as we move forward with BPS, it doesn't rely on having first, second, and third graders continue to have to rally for the resources that they deserve. We shouldn't put them in those positions to begin with. And so I'm grateful to them for doing that, and I'm grateful to BPS for answering it, and I hope that we have many less situations like that moving forward. Thank you, President Flynn.
Thank you, Council Arroyo. The chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. So I first learned about this by zooming into one of the school committee meetings, and I was listening to one of the third-grade students at the Shaw, you know, begging that the promises that were made were kept. So I'm definitely here in support of this. And any promises made to school committees should not be able to go back on because of the instability and the ever-changing leadership at the bowling building. So making sure that we're advocating for this school community and that that promise is kept. And it's great that the children are going out and fighting for this, but we as leaders and adults in the city should always be backing our young children and making sure that, you know, they get what they deserve. So thank you very much, and I'm proud to be part of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Murphy. The chair recognizes Council Loujain. Council Loujain, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. Just want to underscore what my colleagues have already said. The community rally this morning was amazing. It was led completely by the students there who are, you know, second graders, third graders, and they are the ones who are leading the way on this issue. So it's up to us to listen. You go to these school committee meetings and you hear them speak out, and then they send you an email. They are really serious about saving their school. And we also do a disservice to our families here and wreak havoc on the planning process for our families when we promise the communities one thing and then we draw back, right? If we're serious about BPS and about making it a system where our families can enroll their kids, we've got to make sure that we allow them the room and the space to plan for the future, to know if they're going to have a fourth grade and a fifth grade. And this goes just beyond the Shaw to other schools that are trying to expand and have been made promises like McCormick and BCLA of expansion, of improvement. But yet, when it comes time to put the money where the mouth is, we don't see that work actually happening. So we do need to really be honest when we're communicating with our school communities about the plan for the school, to expand it, to help it grow, or if it's a school that, you know, that there is no other alternative but to close it, we need to be honest with families upfront so that they can plan for the future. That's all. I support this resolution and support the work that has been done around this issue. So thank you.
And you'd like to add your name, Council?
Yes, I'd like to add my name.
Same with you, Council Murphy. The chair recognizes Council Rell at this time. Council Rell, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you, Council Mejia and Council Arroyo for this resolution. And I want to speak in strong support for the resolution related to the P.A. Shaw. It was an honor to meet with the students recently. I got the opportunity to visit the P.A. Shaw and got to visit classrooms, art classes and gym classes, and the kids were just so excited about the letters and were asking me if I got to read their letters and saw one of the kids' names in the newspaper. So just so much excitement in that school. And I remain in close contact with parents and advocates on their efforts in attending community meetings where I heard firsthand on the strong desire this community had to expand grade levels at the P.A. Shaw. And just want to make sure that those school committee, those teachers, those teachers, those parents are involved in the conversation, whatever the plans that the district does have, that we are making sure that they're involved in those conversations. And it's also because of their hard work and dedication that the P.A. Shaw will have a fourth grade, but there's still work to be done. And I urge my fellow colleagues to make sure that we support them in this initiative. So thank you.
Can you add your name, Council?
Yes, please.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak on this? Would anyone else like to add their name? Please add Council Bock, Council Edwards, Council Braden, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Lara, Council Loujain, Council Murphy, Council Rell. Please add the chair. Council Mejia and Council Arroyo seeking suspension of the rules and adoption of Docet 0383. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docet 0383 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0384.
Docet number 0384, Councilor Braden offer the following: Resolution concerning equitable global vaccination against COVID-19.
Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. You may wonder, concerning equitable global vaccinations against COVID-19, as we are in this moment where we are returning to some sense of normalcy in Boston and in New England. The reality is, though, that about 50% of the global population is now fully vaccinated, mostly in wealthy countries, but more than 3 billion people around the world have yet to receive a single dose, and many lower-income nations have relied on vaccines such as China's Sinovac, which appears to be less effective and reliable in protecting against the COVID-19 and its variants. This is an international issue that has a local connection to this council and this city. Greater Boston as a region is a home to the global headquarters of Moderna and a major research campus for Pfizer, which are the two companies that currently enjoy patent protections over the COVID-19 vaccines. We're very fortunate to have that intellectual powerhouse right here in our neighborhood, and we've reaped the benefits of those early access to vaccines. However, there is a thing called the TRIPS waiver, which waiver, through the TRIPS waiver, patents and intellectual property protections for the pharmaceutical industry would be temporarily lifted, and the control of production, price, and distribution of COVID-19 vaccines would be lifted from pharmaceutical industries. As leaders in Boston, we, which is home, as I said, home to all of this incredible innovation in treatments and testing and vaccines for this COVID virus, it's time to turn our attention to asking the United States to prioritize pharmaceutical, to not prioritize pharmaceutical corporate profits and vaccine nationalism over the lives and livelihoods of billions of people around the world. I do have personal friends in my church community who have family in India. They've lost multiple members of their families because they haven't had access to vaccines. Many of us in this room have had the same experience. This resolution calls on the Biden and Harris administration to greatly intensify their efforts to deliver on the World Trade Organization TRIPS waiver, as well as to facilitate broad technology transfer to speed vaccine productions and to fund significantly expanded global manufacturing and to expedite vaccine supplies, testing, and treatment that are necessary to end this pandemic everywhere in the world. This is not the last pandemic we're going to see, and the Omicron variant may not be the last variant that we're going to see in relation to COVID-19. So we are calling on the Biden administration to expedite this waiver so that we can share the technology and help save more lives around the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? If you can raise your hand. Is anyone else looking to sign on to this? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Arroyo, Council Bock, Council Edwards, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Lara, Council Loujain, Council Mejia, Council Murphy, Council Rell. And please add the chair. Council Braden seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of Docet 0384. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docet 0384 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, please read Docet 0385.
Docet number 0385, Councilors Flynn and Braden offer the following: Resolution recognizing Irish-American heritage month.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair recognizes the lead sponsor, Councilor Flynn. Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council Arroyo, and I'm honored to partner with my colleague, Council Braden. As we celebrate on the eve of St. Patrick's Day, we were honored to have the minister today with us, but we were also wanted to have the council general with us as well, and the Lord Mayor of West Roxbury, my good friend Richie Gormley, who does incredible work in the Boston community. This body several months ago recognized the great famine that took place, and the minister talked about that very briefly. But when the Irish came here in the 1840s, they faced many of the same struggles that current immigrants face today, including poverty, prejudice, discrimination, and jobs. But the food access and the famine that the Irish struggled with and over a million died with in Ireland, that really resonates today as we do our work on this council during, especially during this pandemic, making sure that our seniors and persons with disabilities and immigrants have that equal fear access to food. And that's what, I think is probably the most important issue in the city, is making sure that those struggling residents have access to food. And that's really been an important issue that the Irish always have dealt with. So I'm proud to be here today and recognize the contributions and sacrifices of the Irish and the Irish-American community here in Boston, across our country. They were active in the building trades, they were active in our city governments across the country, but they also served in the U.S. Armed Services. They served in our military, and many of them fought and died for our country. So during this month, we celebrate these remarkable achievements, and just want to say thank you to all the Irish and Irish-American organizations across Massachusetts that contribute so much to our state, but also recognizing the important role that all immigrants play in our society and making sure that all immigrants have equal access to social and economic justice as well. So I'm honored to partner with my colleague, Council Braden. Thank you, Council Arroyo.
Thank you, Council Flynn. Chair recognizes the second co-sponsor, Council Braden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to... What am I doing here? Is that working? Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Mr. President for your initiative in putting forward this resolution today. We talk a lot about... We talk a lot about the Great Hunger, Gortamore, and how it precipitated the mass, an incredible decrease in the population of Ireland. We lost 100, we lost 4 million people in population. The population of Ireland was just cut in half. A million people died of hunger and starvation and disease on the island, and millions more left to find safety and shelter and food in other places, mainly the United States of America. Many landed on these shores in Boston. There's a memorial to those who died in the quarantine camp out on Deer Island. So two centuries further forward, we still have to learn from what happened there. Our immigrants from Ireland faced incredible prejudice. They came, many of them didn't speak English, they spoke Gaelic. They were impoverished, they had suffered malnutrition, and they came here in poverty, they faced prejudice and discrimination in jobs and housing. And they put down roots here in Boston and in the United States and thrived. That is the wish that all immigrants should come from wherever they come from, that they come to this land of opportunity, they are able to put down roots and thrive and be safe. Ireland last, three weeks ago, when the Ukrainian crisis happened, unfolded and the Russian Federation invaded Ukraine, Ireland suspended all requirements for visas for folks who are fleeing, fleeing from the war. In 2020, in the midst of, in the 1840s, in the midst of the Great Famine, the Choctaw Nation sent aid to the people of Ireland to help them survive the Great Famine. And in 2020, the Irish people returned the favor and the kindness by sending money to the Choctaw Nation to help them survive the COVID epidemic because they didn't have access to supplies and healthcare. And those kindnesses, out of that experience of privation, the Irish people have opened their hearts and recognize the struggles of other people. So I think it's a learning, let's pass it forward, let's extend the hand of friendship, and let's welcome the stranger in Boston. And I'm very proud to honor the Irish-American Heritage Month with you, President Flynn, today, but there's so much more work to do, and let's recommit ourselves to welcoming a stranger. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Would anyone else like to speak on the matter? Counselor Edwards, you have the floor.
Thank you. I've been honored to represent Charlestown in this time and learned a great deal about not only Irish history, but also how generations of Irish immigrants have helped to build this city. But I think what we've learned also in any of our conversations, that we must speak truth to power and to call things what they really are. And yes, we should have and continue to have and acknowledge the many people who died in the hunger, the Great Hunger, but we also need to acknowledge it wasn't a great hunger accidentally, it was intentional starvation and almost genocide of an entire people. Only the Irish people suffered in that moment, the English had food. There was food, and it was, they were feeding off of it, they were eating it, and so we need to acknowledge that it was also a genocide that forced a diaspora around the entire world, from Australia to the United States. And so I think it's really important to use those words, because when we're talking about genocide, when we're talking about refugees, when we're talking about diaspora, too many times we think it's just people of color from other countries. No, the Irish people went through that as well, and we should use those terms when discussing it. It was a great hunger for the Irish people, but it was an intentional harm of an entire culture, if not almost an attempt to decimate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Would any other Counselor like to speak on this matter? Seeing no hands, would anyone like to add their name? Please add, Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Bach, please add Counselor Edwards, please add Counselor Fernandez Anderson, please add Counselor Lara, please add Counselor Lou Jean, please add Counselor Mejia, please add Counselor Murphy, please add Counselor Worrell, and please add my name. Counselor Flynn, I assume you're seeking to suspend and pass? Counselor Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 385. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 385 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Docket 0386?
Docket number 0386, Counselors Flynn and Flaherty offer the following: Resolution in support of the commissioning of the USS Massachusetts.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Counselar Royal, and I'm also speaking on behalf of my colleague Counselor Flaherty as well. There's a possibility that the USS Massachusetts, which is a submarine, could be commissioned here in Boston, and this is what this resolution would do, is encourage our federal leaders to consider bringing the submarine to Boston for this commission. And the reason we're doing that is Boston has strong maritime routes in the city, whether it's in East Boston, whether it's in Charlestown, or the downtown area, or South Boston. But the maritime community, the fishing community, the port of Boston, it's actually named after my father now, but the longshoremen as well, they play an incredible role in our city. But the reason we're doing this is we want the USS Massachusetts, which I mentioned, is a submarine, and it's specifically designed to have both men and women working and living on the sub, and it's a state-of-the-art sub where women in the Navy would have certain, obviously, certain private areas for work and for their barracks as well. So I think myself and Counsel Flaherty do hope to go to D.C. and try to talk to some of our federal officials about the importance of the USS Massachusetts coming here to Boston for a commissioning. We had one a few years ago, which was the USS Thomas Hudner, and it was an exceptional commissioning. We had several thousand people here in the city who also want to welcome people to Boston and tourists to Boston as well. So again, just want to ask my colleagues if they will support this important resolution. I hope we can suspend and pass. Thank you, Counselar Royal.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn, and thank you for your service in our Navy. Does anyone else want to speak on this matter? Seeing no hands, would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Bach, please add Counselor Braden, please add Counselor Edwards, please add Counselor Fernandez Anderson, please add Counselor Lara, please add Counselor Lou Jean, please add Counselor Mejia, please add Counselor Murphy, please add Counselor Worrell, and please add my name. Counselor Flynn seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket 0386. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 386 has been passed. Ah, sorry, adopted.
Thank you, Counselar Royal. We're on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Docket 0387?
Docket number 0387, Counselor Flynn for Counselor Mejia.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules, passage of Docket 0387. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0388.
Docket number 0388, Counselor Flynn for Counselor Murphy.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules, passage of Docket 0388. All those in favor say aye. Opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0389.
Docket number 0389, Counselor Flynn for Counselor Edwards.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules, passage of Docket 0389. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. We're on to late files. I'm informed by the clerk that there are three late files. One is a letter of absence from Counsel Baker. The second one is a hearing order from Counselor Fernandez Anderson. The third is a resolution from Counselor Braden. The late file should be on everyone's desk. We will take a vote to add these items to the agenda. All of those in favor of adding the late file matters to the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. The late file matters have been added to the agenda. The first late file matter is a letter of absence from Counsel Baker. Mr. Clerk, if you can read the letter into the record.
March 16, 2022, correspondence from City Council Frank Baker. Dear President Flynn, please be advised that I will not be in attendance at the Boston City Council meeting on Wednesday, March 16, 2022. Please ask that the clerk, please ask that the clerk read this matter into the record. Thank you. Sincerely, Frank Baker, Boston City Council, District 3.
The late file will be added, will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, please read the second late file matter into the agenda, which is the hearing order from Counsel Fernandez Anderson.
Order offered by Counselor Fernandez Anderson, order for a hearing to discuss how the city budget is addressing equity, whereas in 2020, the city of Boston declared racism as a public health crisis, and whereas 80% of whites own a home while only 1/3 of African-Americans, less than 1/5 of Dominicans and Puerto Ricans, and only half of Caribbean blacks are homeowners in the city of Boston. And be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council hold a hearing to gather data and information from the city and community to ensure that the city's budget is meeting equitable threshold allocations in order to monitor and measure the progress regarding equity in housing, capital investments, economic opportunity to support generational wealth creation, health equity, food access, hiring and leadership, diversity, pay equity, streets, transportation, and sanitation, arts and culture, environment, energy, open space, and climate justice, youth development, civic engagement, and 3-1-1 response data, and COVID recovery for marginalized communities.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. After, as a Chair of Ways and Means, I, as looking, while I'm looking at planning for, to facilitate hearings for the city's budget, I can't help but to think about equity and looking at the different ways that the city puts out the capital budget as opposed to the operations budget, and just the issues on not understanding exactly what's going to what community, what's going to different departments, and understanding, especially with operations budget, and understanding specifically who is it for or what issues are being addressed, specifically to what demographics. So I, I thought that it would be a good idea for us to talk about whether or not a metrics or a dashboard is necessary to measure any type of progress at all. If we're making progress, where is it? How are we measuring it? How are we monitoring it? How do we know that we're actually building equity in the city of Boston? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
You know I'm always going to rise up for equity, right? So, I know, I just would like to just add that I think it's really important as I learned my job, you know, this is my third year, really second term. You know, we spent a lot of time in our budget hearings, listening to a lot of blah, blah, blah. And oftentimes I had to ask myself, what are they saying? And how is this money really being allocated? And we would come in with really good questions and oftentimes leave with more after they answered us. And so I am really grateful that you, in your role as the Chair of Ways and Means, are really going to be leaning into what this moment requires, is for us to hold ourselves accountable, because our job as the financial stewards of the city is to make sure that we are being fair and equitable in that distribution of that budget. So really grateful that you have filed this. Please add my name. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mejia. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else, would anyone like to add their name? Please add Counselor Arroyo, please add Counselor Bach, Counselor Braden, Counselor Lara, Counselor Lou Jean, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Worrell. Please add the Chair. The late, this late file matter will be assigned to the committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, please read the third late file matter into the record, which is a resolution from Counselor Braden.
Resolution to support commitments of Harvard University sought by the Coalition for a Just Alston-Brighton, whereas the President and fellows of Harvard College, DBA Harvard University, and its various subsidiaries, including the Harvard Alston Land Company and Harvard University Beacon Yards LLC, collectively known as Harvard, own approximately 360 acres of land in the Alston-Brighton neighborhoods of the city of Boston, making Harvard the single largest landholder in Alston-Brighton, with its land holdings representing 1/3 of all land in Alston. And be it resolved that the Boston City Council in meeting assembled hereby urges the President and fellows of Harvard College and its affiliates, including Harvard Alston Land Company, to diligently meet commitments sought by the Coalition for a Just Alston and Brighton.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for indulging my request for a late file on this resolution. Yesterday afternoon, in Barry's Corner, the intersection of Harvard, Harvard, North Harvard Street and Western Ave, there was a rally by the Coalition for a Just Alston-Brighton to raise up the issue of asking Harvard to meet some of the commitments that have been drawn up, ask Harvard to commit to working with the community to build an inclusive, equitable, and resilient neighborhood in Alston. Harvard, this is one of the pollsters from yesterday, Harvard owned 1/3 of Alston. And this neighborhood, this particular neighborhood, has had a long history of exploitation and abuse, really, by authorities such as universities and governments. In the 1930s and the 1950s, they were redlined, they were subject to urban renewal. In the 1960s, Barry's Corner was demolished, a whole working-class community was leveled after a nine-year fight, mind you, to try and keep their homes. The Mass Pike Extension cut through this neighborhood with removal of whole streets, just as there were in Chinatown, to build the Mass Pike, with all the attendant woes of air pollution, noise, and the construction of a viaduct that separates the neighborhood from the river. This is an environmental justice community. We've seen institutional expansion by three universities in our neighborhood. We have some of the lowest homeownership in the whole city. Alston has a homeownership of about 10%. I think Mission Hills is lower, I think it's about 9%. It's a direct correlation to institutional expansion in our neighborhood. Family housing for students and absentee landlords, we have a problem with absentee landlords and speculative investors coming in and buying up our family homes to house students and young professionals. Students pay $800 to $1,000 for a bedroom, it's five bedrooms in the home, $5,000 a month. No working-class family can afford $5,000 a month for an apartment, for a home. So this is an ongoing trend. And right now, Harvard is on the cusp of developing their land holdings. They've started by doing it project by project, giving out the projects to third-party developers, and the community is putting their foot down and saying, we want to work with Harvard, we want Harvard to develop a division, a vision, for an inclusive, equitable, and resilient neighborhood. We want to correct the wrongs of the past. We don't want to see further gentrification and displacement of our working families and our immigrant families. This neighborhood of Alston used to have a historic African-American population. It was the home to immigrants from all over the world, Ireland, Italy, Greece, Armenia, all over.
When do you want to end the Mass mandate, sorry? Boston helps.
Please, please refrain from comments at the, at the council. Can we escort you out of the, out of the room, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. So really, we're really asking, as Harvard embarks on this new, rolling out all this new development in this huge space, that we work together with the city, with Harvard, with the state, with the federal government for that matter, to develop a space that is inclusive, equitable and resilient. That we, we, we want to see a master planning process that will engage with the neighborhood in a real way, and make something that we can be proud of as a city and that Harvard can be proud of. They are the largest, most well-endowed university in the world, the second-largest nonprofit in the world, and I think they can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Braden. Would anyone else like to speak on this? The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Oh, yes. So I just wanted to stand and rise and ask that my name get added. And I also want to thank Councilor Braden for leaning into this conversation and really holding Harvard accountable, right? Because oftentimes, things are always being done to us, without us. And I think we, as a body on the council, also have to recognize our responsibility. We have to put a pause on how we're building here in the city of Boston, because if we're not centering on the voices of the people and creating space for those who are really living these realities, to inform what development looks like, then I think it's time for us to shut it down. So I just want to say thank you to Councilor Braden for her leadership in this space, and I'm here for all of it.
Thank you, Councilor Mejia. The Chair recognizes Councilor Loujain. Councilor Loujain, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Councilor Braden for introducing this resolution. I was there yesterday in Alston at Barry's Corner, where they brought together a phenomenal group of activists from around the city, really standing in solidarity with our neighbors in Alston, to hold Harvard accountable, which owns 1/3 of the land through, in Alston, often through these land grabs, often through hiding a lot of their assets. Not only does Harvard have an endowment of $56 billion, it grew by $10 billion. It increased by $10 billion in 2021. They have the money to do everything that CJAB is asking for, which is affordable housing, planning for a future for Alston that includes the neighborhood. Harvard is seeking to transform its campus, and it teaches its students that to seek the truth, that's what it taught me for four years. And the truth is that they can do a lot better. And so I am thankful for the leadership of Councilor Braden on this issue, thankful for all of the incredible activists from around the city that were there yesterday, and I look forward to supporting CJAB and Alston residents in making sure that they come first in Harvard's land grab. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Loujain, and we'll add your name.
Yes, please.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Murphy. Councilor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilor Braden. I was happy to join you, Councilor Loujain, and also Rep. Honant and Rep. Moran, and so many other strong community advocates. So I'm happy to add my name to this, and CJAB is going to fight to make sure that people are put over profit, so I'm happy to join. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Murphy. Anyone else like to speak on this, or add your name, if you could raise your hand? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilor Arroyo, Councilor Bach, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, Councilor Lara, Councilor Loujain, Councilor Mejia, Councilor Murphy, Councilor Worrell, and please add the Chair. Councilor Braden is seeking suspension of the rules and adoption of this late file. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The third late file has been adopted. We're going into green sheets. Anyone wishing to move a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. The Chair recognizes Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask if it'd be okay for Mr. Clerk to pull docket 0346.
Mr. Clerk, will you please read, read docket 0346 into the record? It should be on the last page in the green sheet.
Yes. Docket number 0346 from the Committee on Ways and Means. Message in order for your approval and order authorizing the city of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority Statement of Interest for its Accelerated Repair Program for the following schools: the Warren Prescott, Haley Pilot School, Curly K-8 School, Lower Building, Henderson K-12 Inclusion School, Upper Campus, Orenberger School and the English High School. The statements of interest describe and explain the deficiencies and the priority category for which the city of Boston may be invited to apply to the MSBA Accelerated Repair Grant Program in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can you please pull the committee members to see if they would allow the docket to come before the body?
Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. Yes, yes. Councilor Edwards. Councilor Worrell. Councilor Mejia. Councilor Loujain. And Councilor Braden.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Docket 0346 is now properly before the body. Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm pulling this docket from the green sheets in order to enable BPS to move forward with their application process to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The MSBA supports school districts with supports for repairs, renovations and major capital projects for schools throughout the Commonwealth. The Accelerated Repair Program, ARP, supports small repairs, including boilers, roofs and windows, and is an annual funding round. The deadline for districts to apply is March 25th, hence my pulling this docket. To apply for, BPS needs approval from this council to submit their statement of interest for potential projects, which is before you now for a vote. The proposal includes seven schools throughout the district for these small-scale repair projects. The schools are, as have been, they've been listed already, but they are Warren Prescott in Charleston, Haley Pilot School in Rosendale, Curly K-8, Lower School in Jamaica Plain, Burke High School in Dorchester, Henderson K-12, Upper in Dorchester, Orenberger School in West Roxbury, English High in Jamaica Plain. If approved, BPS will have to come to the council for approval for these expenditures and to provide details about the projects and their impact. The district has had success with these applications in the past, and we hope that to get it approved and projects from the MSBA today. For this reason, I'm asking for suspension and pass of this docket. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Fernandez, Fernandez-Anderson. The Chair recognizes Councilor Bach. Councilor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. And I want to say, first of all, that I am supporting the Chair's request today. I think it's super important that Boston gets these funds, and we've had an excellent track record lately of getting these funds from the MSBA. And obviously, we would not want to miss the funding round. But I feel like it's really important for this body to communicate over to BPS that it's just not acceptable to file the MSBA docket so late that there isn't council time to conduct hearings. And the reason that I'm standing on this is because the, our folks in BPS and PFD did this to me when I was chairing Ways and Means on several occasions, and now they're doing it to Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, and it's just not something that the body should accept. And it's, and it's something that absolutely needs to get back to the people in charge, that they have to take their timelines and back them out and make time for council oversight. Because the reality is that, you know, these are amazing grants for us to get, they're for roofs, boilers and windows, but when we get them from the state, they then obligate us vis-à-vis that building, not to like, for instance, knock it down or build a new building for like a 20-year period. So they actually have like long-term impacts on BPS capital planning, which, as we've been discussing today in relation to the Shaw, is something that we really like need to do better at as a city. So I do, like, I recognize that we will have other bites at this apple and get a chance to talk about it, and I think that the last thing we'd want to do is to not have the opportunity to get these funds from the state, since it's been such a successful accelerator repair program. But I just want to put on the record that the next time that the, that PFD and BPS file these dockets with us so late that there isn't time for a hearing, like, I'm just going to vote against it. And I just think that we really need them to recognize the important role of this body in this process. So I just, I wanted to support the Chair, I think she's doing the right thing today in pulling this, but I also think that, that the administration, and this has now happened across three administrations, is putting the council in a situation that it should not be vis-à-vis these expenditures. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Bach. The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Yes, so I just want to rise and say that I too support the Chair in pulling this, and I think in, in the spirit of government accountability and transparency, it is really important for us to recognize that we can't continue to do business as usual. And I do remember participating in a hearing in regards to these windows. And I do remember asking a lot of questions about how these schools are selected. And I remember a lot of those questions not being answered. And here we are yet again, right? So I will have to underscore that while we definitely want to support this process and making sure that we suspend and pass, in the spirit of, in, in support of this, I also want to just make it clear for the record that when it comes to the way we're spending our money, we're going to have to start being a little bit more responsible and holding folks accountable to doing business the way it should be done. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mejia. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Councilor Lara. Councilor Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I just want to share my support for both pulling this from the green sheets and suspending and passing it. As the Chair of Environmental Justice, Resiliency and Parks Committee, this is really going to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs for the school. And as the representative from District 6, three out of the seven schools are in my district. The Orenberger, the Curly and the English High School are all meant to be beneficiary, beneficiaries of this grant, both, all three schools, which are incredibly high need in my district, two of which are my alma maters. And so I just wanted to stand and support it both as the Chair of the Environmental Justice Committee and as the representative from District 6.
Thank you, Councilor Lara. The Chair recognizes Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
I just wanted to express my gratitude for, or support for Councilor Bach for expressing her position. I do understand the frustration and agree that BPS, get your stuff together. However, being that we are district counselors and we have schools, for the district councils here, we have schools in our districts, and we understand the severity of the need for these grants, I of course would say that we have to push it forward. And I, again, like, I, I support it and I am all for the process, and, you know, the respectful process of understanding that we need time, that they should be more organized to file these things sooner. And I think that the administration did a great job with getting it to me as soon as, as possible, but here we are. And again, thank you so much for expression of support.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. Anyone else looking to speak or raise your hand if you want to sign on? Do we do that? There's, there's no signing, there's no signing on to this one. Councilor Fernandez-Anderson is on, on docket 0346, moves for passage. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Docket 0346 is passed. We're going into the consent agenda. I have been informed by the clerk that there are zero additions to the consent agenda. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. Announcements, does anyone wish to make an announcement at this time? The Chair recognizes Councilor Braden. Councilor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to take a few moments to pay tribute to a dear neighbor of ours in Alston-Brighton, longtime resident, Nook Square, Jeanette Cardia. She was a retired math teacher, she was a volunteer at the Alston-Brighton Food Pantry, and she was a very avid and enthusiastic supporter of the Thaniel Branch Library. She was the treasurer of the Friends. She died very suddenly recently, and she's greatly missed in our neighborhood. It's important to hold up those folks who quietly go about the job of making our communities better every day, and important to recognize their work. And I, I want to just give thanks, tribute, pay tribute to Jeanette today as, as we mourn her passing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Braden. The Chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I just want to quickly take a moment to talk about last night's incident that happened at Tech Boston. Part of me is speaking as the Chair on the Committee of Education, but I'm also mostly speaking here as a community member, as a single mom, who's always worried about whether or not my daughter will be safe when I drop her to and from school, right? And while it's reassuring to know that the victims are in stable condition as of yesterday evening, what happened at Tech Boston will no doubt spark conversations about what we're doing as a district and as a community, um, to ensure that our children and our educators are safe. And I, and I, and although I know we may not always agree on what the solutions would look like, I do believe that we can all agree that there is a problem that continues to persist. And what this moment calls for is for us to reckon with our differences and work together to create school environments that are friendly, welcoming and safe for everyone. I also want to make sure that we're providing and accommodating care and mental health and trauma-informed resources for everyone that was involved. There's a lot of issues around vicarious trauma, you know, people who have experienced and have witnessed violence, and we have this expectation that we're just going to keep on keeping on, but at some point, we need to recognize and grapple with the trauma and the residue of that, because sometimes it's paralyzing. You may not even want to go to school anymore because of it. So I just would also just wanted to thank the administration, the administrators and the mayor for quickly responding to the incident and also for showing up. And I hope that we can work collaboratively on pathways that will center violence prevention and community dialogues as we move forward in this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mejia. No further announcements, we're going on to memorials. Today, today we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individual, Councilor Braden, Jeanette Cardia. A moment of silence, please. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the individuals and is scheduled, now scheduled to meet again in the I and L Chamber on Wednesday, March 23rd at 12 noon. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
The council is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, central staff, and thank you to the clerk's team.